Being 7 o'clock on Monday, November 19th, 2018, I would like to call to order the regular school committee meeting. Our agenda will be as follows. Visitors, approval of minutes, teaching and learning highlights, MasQ student presenters, school committee vote to appoint a school nurse, second reading of policy IJNDB, Internet Responsible Use Policy for Students, approval of OPM, owners, project manager, and architect contract amendments, the Borough Elementary School Project, FY19 budget update, acceptance of donations, or a donation, and other matters. Do we have any visitors this evening? Okay, I would like to move on to approval of minutes. Are there any additions or corrections? I would like to address something on page four, please. It does say that the first high school musical production in 10 years was to be performed, which was excellent, by the way. We do not have the exact year of the last musical, and Mrs. Moreno just has been retired fully for only a year. So I would prefer it to read in about 10 years.
Can we just say several years?
Or we could say in several years.
Several years.
Because none of us know the exact date, and I think that, okay, in several years.
I think it might have been when Juliette was in school.
Oh, I know.
When did she graduate?
2011.
I know, I know it hasn't been a full decade. But I tried to confirm it with her, but I couldn't reach her today.
Well, Juliette would have been a freshman in 2008.
Right. Right.
I think several will cover it.
Several, several will cover it. Okay, that makes me more comfortable. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the regular minutes as amended.
One second.
You're fast.
Give it to Rich.
It's all yours, Rich.
Go team, all in favor. 5-0-0. Thank you. Mass and Learning Highlights, MasQ presenters. Dr. Verdas.
Our favorite part of the agenda. So we have many friends that I'd like to invite up to the visitors' table. So our MasQ Q kids, if you'll come right up, just grab your chairs. And as you're bringing your chairs up, I'll give a little bit of background so those that are watching us on TV at home can understand exactly the part that you did in your presentation. So MasQ is the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, and they partner with the Computer User Education, which is the technology leadership across the state, and put together a state conference that takes place in mid-October. It's a technology conference for educators, and educators present, but they also have an opportunity for students to present as part of Qubits. And that presentation, students can range from kindergarten, which now first graders, but all the way up to high school students. And we had three different groups from Foxborough this year that were selected to present at this conference. We're going to hear from our elementary and our middle school presenters this evening. And the Q Kids portion is an opportunity for students to share with others, how do you integrate technology in a way that's going to be engaging, and you're going to impact learning. And you will hear this evening from our presenters that they did just that. So before I turn it over, the Qubit session from our middle school students was social learning in the math classroom. And you're going to hear specifically about the Flipgrid. And one of the things that I want to make a note of, which I think is so fascinating, is a year ago, at the MasQ conference, one of our teachers presented on Flipgrid. Only a year later, we have students presenting on Flipgrid, which is so amazing. And then from Ms. Wayne Ribbs' classroom, and Darlene Reed, who is the Technology Integration Specialist at the elementary level, their Qubit session was digital storytelling. It's elementary. So we'll turn it over to you, so you can say who you are, and what your presentation was like, and how was it presenting at Gillette Stadium? So Ms. Lai, how about, so we have Alicia Camp alone, sixth grade teacher, and Noah Lai, eighth grade teacher, and they're with, here with their students. And we have a quick video that's going to show part of the Ignite session. So one of the things just I'd like to make a note on, the Ignite session is students have two minutes or less to explain what they're presenting. And it's grades four through 12. If you're in grades kindergarten through third grade, it's optional to be able to stand up in front of a camera and do that. Our kindergartners at the time chose to do that, and we have their video here as well. So I'll come and help you with technology, Ms. Lai, as you talk a little bit about it.
Or Ms. Camp alone.
So we, I went with the middle schoolers, so we have George, and we have Will, and we have Addie over here. So George is in eighth grade, Will and Addie are in sixth grade. And they were able to present about Flipgrid. Do you want to tell everyone what you talked about with Flipgrid? How we use it in math?
Yeah. So basically, what we do with Flipgrid is, so my, Ms. Lai would get, well, would write up a prompt, and that prompt would, I would get a notification on my phone saying, well, Ms. Lai created a new prompt. And I would go to, I would enter the code and sign into my Office 365 account, or if other schools use Google Classroom. And then I would make a video, like say, the prompt was, I would have to solve a math equation and explain how I did it. I would make a video explaining how I solved the math equation, what my answer was, and then I would submit it. And I could also view other people's submissions, and comment, and have like a video conversation back and forth with the person on how they, how they did the problem. And you can also like the videos, which I find really fun. So, yeah.
So the teacher can choose if the whole class sees it, or just the teacher. So if just the teacher sees it, like, only she can, like, see notes or something. And if it's the whole class, then you can, the whole class can see your video, but it's not like anyone else that's not in your class.
And what I think is cool about it is, if you, if you like think something's really cool that you made, like in a STEM activity, in like science or math, then you can show it to your classmates, and see what they have done. And you could get, like, you could think of, like, you can see what they did, and add on that to yours, your project.
So you have about, you can, the teacher can choose how much time you have to make the video. So you can have a minute and 30 seconds, five minutes, or a limited time, now that we have the premium for free, because it's free for anyone with Google Classroom or Office 365, so that's good.
Wow. You can make a video in a minute and a half? I need to take your class.
So these three did an awesome job with Addie Ozo, who couldn't be here tonight, just explaining to the teachers and the other adults at the conference how they use Flipgrid. You had the adults there make sample Flipgrid, right? So they went around with iPads, and had adults there make their own Flipgrid, so they can kind of see how it worked. They showed some videos that they had made in class. So they did a really, really nice job speaking with the adults.
So it's easy to use Flipgrid?
Yeah. The learning curve's not that steep.
Well, it's, it's pretty easy to use. All you have to do is tap a few buttons, and press record, and then you're all set. Also, another great thing about it is that you can take notes before you record, so you can like see your notes. And while you're recording, you can like say, oh, what was I gonna say again? Oh, I can look at my notes. And the notes are discarded once you've submitted it, so no one else can see your notes. But you already are explaining it in the video, so no one needs to read your notes because you're explaining them.
Usually get it on the first try, or do you have to do a couple takes?
Yeah.
The teacher explains it sometimes in the classroom.
Yeah. That's good.
I'm pretty sure I don't know how to do anything that they're talking about, so I'm very impressed.
I am.
And I can't wait to see their presentation.
So work as a Flipgrid, exactly?
It's like a way to see other people's, your teacher would give you a prompt that you would have to answer, and then you would answer that on a video that you can record yourself. And then you can, you can like take a picture of yourself, but you don't have to. And then you would put it on, onto like, you would put it, you would submit it, and then everybody else can watch it, including the teacher.
It's almost like a blog. So if you think of, if you actually flipping through something, but it's there all digitally, and you can see all, am I right? You can see all the different submissions, and then you can learn from each other, instead of just learning from your teacher. That's kind of the point, right?
And also, the exact words that we said, I don't know why I still remember this, but we said, "Flipgrid is an online learning resource that students and teachers use in their classrooms to make videos to get inspirations," something like that.
Very good. Very nice. When you said Flipgrid, I, I used to teach filmmaking. And you know, when you see a movie, you do not see motion. You see several sequential motions, so fast that it looks like moving. So I used to make my filmmaking students, their first thing they had to do was make a flip book. And you start at the bottom, and just do slight different sketch all the way through, so that when you flipped it, it made it look like it was moving.
You might have seen that children's book.
It's just the illusion of movement, as several. So I didn't understand what a Flipgrid was. Thank you for explaining it.
So what's really cool about it is that it's a website, and, and an app. So I can access it from my cellphone, and I could, and if I don't have a cellphone, I can also access it with a computer. And we have computers in school, so if I don't have an internet connection at home, or I don't have a device at home, I can use the in-school computer and do it in school, which is great, because you can do it in school.
So there's no, no excuse for not finishing a project.
So is it homework, or is it, is it in addition to your regular academia day? Or is it extracurricular, extra credit, or?
Sometimes. It's all of.
The teacher can choose.
Yeah, so in sixth grade, we've been using it more in class. I think you've been assigning it for homework. We do a combination. We use In Guide to Math, and we use it for our homework assignment to reflect In Guide to Math.
That's right.
And it's just a great way for the kids to see in math that there's more than one way of solving a problem. So Addie solves a problem one way, and Will solves it the other way. They can watch each other's videos, and learn a new take on how to solve a problem.
That's fantastic.
I think it's very visual, you know, what, what the kids are doing on their, you know, with Snapchat, and Instagram, and YouTube videos, that it kind of works with the media that they're used to in their daily lives, communicating with each other. And then it kind of makes the homework probably more fun, do you think? A little more fun to do the math this way.
Have you discovered that other people might have a more efficient strategy than you, and you've learned something from it?
Definitely, all the time. Like, if you're stuck, then you might see like what they're starting off with, and that might help you.
That's great.
Do you find that you learn it better sometimes by speaking it, and talking it out? And it shows, it shows your better understanding, and you kind of figure it out differently than just writing things on paper?
Yeah, and if you, if you realize when you're saying it out loud that you made a mistake, that could help.
For me, it helps if I say it out loud. It makes me understand it more.
Makes sense.
So would you like to see the Qubit?
Yes.
Portion. So this is George, and this, so this was just to introduce Flipgrid to the audience. This is an actual Flipgrid itself.
This is a commercial for Flipgrid.
(singing) I see a school of students sitting yonder, and they're acting like a pack of hens. Gazing into space, they let their minds wander, saying, "The good math tools. Flipgrid will help them pay attention, build their comprehension, help them on a quiz of their attention, not to mention all the stuff they'll learn. And all of it starts with the George A. Hearn." Hello, everyone. I bet you might know what I'm talking about. Well, I'm talking about the best free interactive learning tool for students, and it's called Flipgrid. Flipgrid is an easy-to-use free app that allows students to create videos based on their teacher's prompt. It could be about a math question, or about a certain concept they're learning. Not only will this help students with understanding the lessons they're learning, it will also help them with their social skills as well. See, after they make a Flipgrid, their teacher can either post it to, for the whole class to see. Students can like, comment, and get ideas from other students' Flipgrids for their own. And the best part for teachers is that it's free to use if they have a Google or Microsoft account. For more information, please come visit us at our Flipgrid booth. Thank you.
Very good.
Great.
So, yeah, that was Flipgrid.
Very impressive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good explanation, too, of everything.
Mm-hmm. Liked the song.
(singing) I use technology.
So Ms. Wayne Ribbs, do you want to talk a little bit about our digital storytelling? Introduce Jamison and Liam.
Yes, this is, this is Jamison and Liam, and Emma, I thought she was supposed to be here, but she's not. Well, in kindergarten, obviously, first we have to teach the kids how to write, write, learn letters, learn, learn how to put the letters together to make words, and eventually, at the end of the year, they write stories.
Wow.
So we used to do it writing stories. Well, they still write, but now we've incorporated technology to, with their stories. So, do you want to tell them a little bit what you did, what's in your story?
So we went on PowerPoint, and we needed the solution, the problem, and we did our characters, and then we did the setting, too, and we drew pictures, too. And then we went on the computers, we, we typed in our stories, and then we draw the pictures, and we put in our names, so we know, so they know who it is, and...
Yeah, and also, they, like, they recorded our voices, and it went in, and it went into our story. And there was like a speaker thing, and if you clicked on it, it would say what, say what you said. And like, if you type something, it will say the exact, the exact same thing if you say the same thing. And, and if you want to go on the next page, like, because there was a story thing, and you could click on the next page. And if you went on the next page, you could like go back and forth, and if you went down the thing, it would look like it was moving and backwards, and it came like an illusion, I found out.
That's pretty neat.
And also, you have to realize, when children come into kindergarten, some of them don't even know how to use the computer, because they're so used to using swiping, you know, with their, their tab, their tablets. So we really have a lot to learn. We have to teach them how to use the mouse, how to negotiate it, and then with all the literacy that has to go into it. And it was, it was, it was hard, but they did it. And they, and we, oh, at the end, we invited parents and families to come, so our budding authors can showcase their stories. We put it on the whiteboards, and we had an author's tea.
Very nice.
Oh, how.
Very nice.
Well, I feel old now, because we had author's teas when my children, who are now graduated, but they were hard copy books, and this sounds like much more fun, I'll be honest with you.
They do the hard copy also, so they can take it home.
The hard copies are cool, but this digital, digital literacy sounds like a lot of fun, especially the voice recording, so it's you telling your story.
I think that's exciting.
So to do the Ignite sessions here with these presentations, again, kindergarten through third grade, that's, that's pretty hard to stand up in front of an audience at Gillette Stadium and present.
Yeah.
But not for Jamison and Liam.
And they, can I just say, they didn't even know they were going to have this. It was like last, it was like last minute thing.
Mrs. McCarthy signed you up.
She surprised you.
Technology. This is Emma, and Liam, and Jamison. Thank you.
First, we created the story. We had character setting problems. We went on PowerPoint. We typed our stories, then we drawn the picture. We recorded our, our voice, reading our stories.
And after they did all this, we invited their families, and we had a author's tea so that they could showcase their wonderful work.
Hey.
That's fantastic.
So lots of great ideas for integrating technology to make things a lot more engaging.
So what was your favorite part, Mrs. Wayne Ribbs students, of your visit to Gillette Stadium? I think I might know, but I'm just curious.
Maybe one Pat Patriot.
Would you like to tell everybody what you got to do with Pat Patriot?
We got lots of autographs. We, we did Fortnite dances, the same.
Yes. Fortnite dances.
And what other dance did you do? Do you remember? You did it super fast.
The floss?
Yeah. They were able to floss, yeah. That one went on Twitter.
Oh.
You saw that on Twitter. Now I remember.
Yes.
How many people do they, do you present to at the MasQ? How many people were there?
In the Ignite, or in the booths?
In the Ignite, where they were, well, both, I guess.
They had a lot of traffic out at the booths. The Ignite space is a little bit smaller. How many people were in there?
I think there were probably about eight or 10 tables, I think. And then people come through, and they ask, they ask the kids questions.
Yeah, that's great. That's awesome.
There's over 1,000 people at the conference. And then those that are going through, and the other table that we had were three of our high school students, and they presented on what you've seen with what they did through Senior Inc. with the Ukraine.
That's pretty cool.
That's great. That was a cool project.
You should all be very proud of yourself. It's only hard to speak in front of audiences.
I think this is George's second trip to the school committee.
I know he's been here before.
It's early in November, so it's great to see you, George.
I do recognize you. He's a repeat.
You guys, too. Thank you.
It's great to see all of you. Thank you for coming.
And thanks to the teachers for really experimenting with technology.
Yes.
I mean, I think the kids, would you think that's a good thing, that your teachers are experimenting with technology to make your learning experience better?
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah. Thanks for putting the time in.
Absolutely.
It takes extra time to get it ready for them, so it's really much, very much appreciated.
But it makes it all worth it, doesn't it, when you see the end product that they create?
It makes it more fun for us, too.
And there's this crosspiece, sixth grade to eighth grade, and the constant vertical articulation that we have when we look at the curriculum. It's a great way to collaborate, and it makes it a lot more fun, too.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you. Very. Come again.
I think George will.
Pretty confident, though, to be able to speak like that.
Wow. You can only imagine when there are seniors in high schools. That's fabulous. Fabulous.
I'm going to see George again.
Many times.
I mean, what, who is your kindergarten? Mrs. Abrams, thank you for coming, too.
Thanks.
Yes. Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Bye.
Bye. Okay, school committee vote to appoint a school nurse.
Dr. Verdas. Okay, so, as you are aware, that any nurse appointed as state law has to be appointed by the school committee. Lynn McGary, who was the Point Four Nurse at the Ahearn, resigned at the beginning of the school year, because she went full-time at Newton Wellesley Hospital, where she also worked. And so you have the resume in there for Nicole Quinn, who is the new Point Four. She's been a daily sub for us. And once they have, they have to have two licenses, actually. There are in, which she has, as you can see from her extensive resume, comes in with quite the experience. But they also have to go through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to acquire that second certification. So once she has that, then we're able, or you're able to actually do the appointment.
Does she use an I in?
Yes.
Yeah, her resume is very impressive, and she's been a substitute for us for a couple years now.
Yes, for a couple of years. She's actually subbed in other districts, so we were really fortunate to be able to have her come on with us on a more regular basis. And she's, kids love her, teachers love her already, so it's a great team over there with Jen Rosenberg, who's the full-time nurse.
Has she been filling in since the start of the year?
Yes.
Great. Well, welcome.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Nicole Quinn as our school nurse at the Ahearn, our second school nurse at the Ahearn.
I'll second that.
All in favor? 5-0-0. Congratulations.
Debbie, before we move on, I want to just say, well, Lynn McGary will definitely be missed over there. She was a wonderful school nurse, and it's exciting, she's got a full-time opportunity at Newton Wellesley, but I know, you know, many, many, many parents who have had just wonderful things, myself included, to say about Lynn's kindness, and caring, and compassion over the last few years that she's worked for us. Many years that she's worked for us as a school nurse. So thank you, Lynn, for all of your hard work.
Oh, yes. But it was a nice opportunity for her.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely, a great opportunity. But she will be missed by our students and our parents. Absolutely.
Second reading of policy IJNDB, Internet Responsible Use Policy for Students.
Make a motion to waive the reading?
One second. All in favor? The reading is waived. Any further discussion?
The only thing I would note is that up at the top, I think, I just think the line is through the U. I think it should be through the A, so that the parentheses will be Responsible Use Policy.
I-R-U-P-S, right? Yeah, I think so. Because I think they took the internet out and...
Yeah. That's, that's all. That was my only, my only thought. Other than that, I think we had a good discussion about this at our last meeting. And thank you, guys, for your work on this policy. It's something, I think this particular policy is something that we're going to continually be working on, because...
We have, it's going to...
We have been, and I think we, as, as social media, and everything continues to evolve, and our kids are using it at younger ages, and I think, I think this is a policy that our committee and all school committees are going to have to continue to look at.
The internet is going to continue to change.
Oh, absolutely.
So this is, this is a moving document.
It is, indeed.
Moving, living document.
It is, so, you know, we're doing our best to keep up with it. Right?
And even just looking at the times it's already been revised.
I know.
2012, 2015, 2018.
Absolutely.
And it may even become more frequent.
Yes, I would think so.
With the leaps and bounds that, we just don't know.
I think you'll, you'll continue to see different cases, you know, go through the court system on this very subject. You know, it is something that has been almost untried, you know, over the last, it's getting more exposure, and I think we will see more legal decisions that will impact...
As case law comes out.
As case law comes out. That's what I was trying to get at. Thank you. So, but I think this is a good, I'll make a motion that we accept the Internet Responsible Use Policy, students file IJNDB as presented.
One second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, approval of OPM, owners, project manager, and architect contract amendments. Mr. U for the Borough Project.
So the school committee authorized a subcommittee back at the beginning of the project to review different OPMs and different architects. You later approved KBA as the architect, and Colliers as the OPM. The contracts were written under the MSBA guidelines, which allowed for a continuation if we made it out of the feasibility stage. So really, what was then negotiated after the feasibility stage was strictly a financial dollar value to go into the second phase. Second phase, obviously, being the full... Second phase, obviously, being the full construction documents, construction management, and then closeout. So in the OPM's case, you had originally had a contract for one hundred and sixty-one thousand, five ninety to get us through that first phase. The amendment, which will take us through two thousand twenty-one, basically is a, an increase of eight hundred and one thousand, eight hundred dollars. They originally requested more, which was what was on our Form thirty-eleven to the MSBA, which they approved, but there was a, an amount that was going to be over the allowed percentage by the MSBA. I renegotiated that agreement, so it came down by one hundred and thirty-seven thousand to get us under the MSBA's requirements and actually saved us about twenty thousand from there. So what I'm gonna need is, is basically two votes. One to amend the, the OPM and one to amend the architect. And in this case, it would be the OPM, Colliers International, to increase their contract by eight hundred, one thousand, eight hundred dollars to a total of nine hundred, thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred. So that'd be my first motion request.
I'll make that motion. Janet, can you, can you write the motion just as Bill said it?
So what was the new total fee?
So the new total would be nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred.
Yep.
No, I'm sorry, is it nine hundred and sixty-three thousand?
I'm sorry, nine hundred, nine hundred and sixty-three. No, sorry.
No, what is it?
Nine hundred and sixty-three, three ninety.
Right.
Okay, you were looking at a different number.
Okay.
So it's like here.
Right, yeah, I'm sorry.
And the increase that we're voting is the eight hundred and one what? Eight oh one what?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred.
Eight oh one, eight hundred.
Eight oh one, eight hundred?
Yep.
Would this have been typical under, no matter who we had hired?
Well, the, no, it really depends. The, the problem with both architects and OPMs, you don't hire based on low bid, you based on, you hire based on qualifications. Then you have to negotiate the, the financial side. The nice thing is, in this particular case, the MSBA has a guideline for what they believe is appropriate. I will say that while both these seem like a lot of money, they still fall within the MSBA's requirement, but this is a phased two and a half year project. So they're onsite for a lot longer period than if you were doing new construction, and therefore they have to have manpower. In the OPM's case, they literally, once we hit the ground next November, we'll have to have somebody onsite every single day that a contractor is there through the end of the project. So there's a lot of manpower, a lot of hours that are involved with it, not to mention the oversight of their entire company and any additional work that the rest of the company does, which is very typical for the OPMs.
And this brought us, this brought us just under the guidelines of...
Yes, just under the three and a half percent of construction cost.
If something else happened, would we be on the hook for that?
No.
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 Okay. I'll second it. Was there, was there a motion yet?
I, I made... I, I did make, no, I made the motion, so, just, and then you can second it.
I'll second it, yeah.
Before we vote on it, though, I would like to just interject that when we were in the feasibility study and hiring the OPM, the amount of hours that went into the committee to hire Colliers as, the, the amount of review of the proposals, it was significant at the time. So I, I mean, we really felt then that they were the best choice for this project based on their experience and commitment to the project, that kind of, the other MSBA projects that they've worked on, they had the requisite qualifications. So I, I feel pretty confident that they're gonna do a very good job for us going forward.
And I would say to this point, they've done a, they've done an excellent job. They're, they're, they are very, they are a large firm, as compared to some of the other projects we've worked with, much smaller firms. The beauty of that is they bring a lot more resources to you. We had a similar situation with the town hall with a different OPM, very large, but the beauty of that was when we got in trouble with hazardous materials, they had a whole division within their group that handled that, and that's why we were able to get through very quickly. So that's kind of why we looked at Colliers also in the, in the same type of sense. It's, this is, this is, we, we anticipated from day one this was gonna be a more complicated project than a standard, you know, we got a blank slate, we're gonna build a building.
Right.
And so that's why having a, a strong team is very important to us.
And you said you negotiated with them to bring it down, is that right?
Yeah, they, they, they're, like I said, their, their original contract price was the nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred. And I, I got that reduced down by the one hundred and thirty-seven, nine hundred, to get us down to the eight oh one, eight hundred difference. So they were originally a hundred and seventeen thousand over the MSBA's thing, so now we're about twenty under it.
Yeah, well done.
So.
Thank you.
Great job.
Yeah, thanks for doing that.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five zero zero.
The second one is Castle Booze and Associates, which is KBA. They're the architectural firm we've been working with. I feel very strongly about them. They've done an excellent job to date. This, again, because the project is, is more difficult, you really have to understand at an earlier stage whether or not you can even do a renovation. So they put a lot more effort in than most would expect to do in the schematic design, and they, you know, knew that they were kind of buying their, their basis forward because they had to do it. So in their case, the amended amount is two million, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy. We've already approved, or you've already approved, the three hundred and seventy-eight thousand in the first feasibility and schematic design phase. So when you add the two together, we'll end up with that total of two million, seven hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and seventy. And as you can see in both of these, there's phases in which the money is associated with getting us through, whether it's the original design, the actual bidding process, the construction itself, and then the completion.
I would move the additional two million, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars.
I'll second.
So these were expected costs, right? Because there was nothing filled in originally for the design?
Yes, exactly. But again, in, in, in each one of these, the MSBA has different guidelines for what they anticipate these two areas to be, and they, again, they will only participate in their funding up to those guidelines. You can go way over if you'd like, but you're gonna pay the full amount, so.
And all of these amounts fall within the MSBA guidelines?
Yes, now, now both of them fall within, which actually will, you know, is fine. And again, the, the, the Form thirty-eleven is the actual budget. That's already been approved by the MSBA, so they're actually gonna see a reduction in our Form thirty-eleven from the OPM. But they've, they've already kind of sanctioned this whole thing themselves as well, based on the project that was the scope we're dealing with.
And this is a Foxborough company?
No. Well, KBA is, yes.
KBA, yeah.
They're actually, they're, they're corporately out of New Britain, Connecticut, but they have a, a office here, in fact, they just moved into the old state hospital facility, beautiful office over there. They used to be over off of Forbes Boulevard there, I guess.
And Chris, they've done other projects for the town, you know, the same firm.
Yeah. Yeah, they did, they, they actually did this high school with us, and they did the joint public safety building with us. One of the beauties, I, I've got to tell you, and this is my, has always been my commentary, commentary to the MSBA when we've been dealing with them, is that it does make a huge difference having a local firm, especially when you're doing a renovation, because so many things can happen during the day.
Yeah.
That you don't want to have to wait twenty-four or forty-eight hours for somebody to come out to do. And what's really been nice with KBA is Joe Maloney, who's been the lead for almost all of our project, he goes by our projects on the way to work, and he goes by on the way home, and if something comes in the middle of the day, he gets in his car and comes over. And for us, if we need to, we can go right to their offices, too.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I asked about the Foxborough question.
So it is, it's really, to me, I think it's a critical thing on, on complicated projects. It, you know, might not be as much on, on, you know, a less complicated project.
He is meticulous.
He is very meticulous.
Oh, we're very fortunate to have them.
Agree.
And they're very proud of what they do.
Oh, absolutely.
Mm-hmm, should be. All right.
So we had a motion and second. Do we have a vote?
Are we further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor? Five zero zero, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Thanks, Bill.
And you're still up with the FY nineteen budget update, please, Mr. Youkner.
So as you can see, at, at this point, November sixteenth, we really haven't had any changes to our budget, you know, as far as financially. We are holding extremely tight to most of our budget lines. The issue that I have been kind of talking about for the last couple of years, this is really the first year that it's coming extremely close. As you know, when we go in the budget process, one of the requirements is that we have to make up one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in salary reductions based on retirements. And it's, it's been a kind of a, a rule of thumb that was put in place years ago, rather than people trying to guess who's gonna retire at the end of the year, town always said, well, if you use this, that's basically five, you know, five retirements during the year, and that seems reasonable. And it has been very reasonable. In fact, we've been fortunate to be over, and that's given us some of the money that we've used on some of these other CIP projects for the last couple of years during the summertime. But this year, we basically were very tight. So in the end, we had a couple of issues happen. We had basically fewer retirements, and we also had the need, which we don't always have, but we've had in the last couple of years, too, with move-ins for additional ed assistance. We had two or three kids come in that had that requirement in their IEPs, so we immediately had to fire, hire a, for one-on-ones.
How many one-on-ones do we have throughout the system, do you know? Offhand?
Not just one-on-ones. I, I, I don't know that number.
No, and, and it's not many because that are, philosophically, we look to, to not go towards one-on-ones, but there are some needs that, that require, that require that.
Oh, just some needs, but not...
And if we have someone that moves in and that's within their IEP, then the laws, we have to then provide a one-on-one. So we've had those move in this current school year.
And then the second piece to that is, already this year, which is, is very unusual for us, we've had a number of people go out on long-term medicals. It's not unusual for us to have, you know, people go out on a pregnancy leave or something, which is usually eight to twelve weeks, but we've got some long-term medicals that are gonna go for a while here. And the reality is if they have obviously not used their sick time, we're paying, we're gonna be paying them for their sick time, plus we gotta pay for a replacement. So this year, we're going to be extremely tight on the salary lines. And obviously, I've got some concern on it. I'm, I'm comfortable right now that we're in check, but if we have anything else that really comes through this year that creates a major salary cost, that's, it's going to, you know, be a, a thing that we're gonna have to find out in some of our expense lines. We'll have to make some changes and go from there, so. So basically, I, I guess I'm just putting you on notice that, that it is a concern I have. At this point, right now, we're good, but it is something that can happen, you know, very easily over the next six months.
So we're hopeful for no more extraneous challenges?
Exactly.
Is there a motion to accept Mr. Youkner's report?
I'm making a motion to accept Bill Youkner's report for FY nineteen budget summary statement.
A second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five zero zero. Acceptance of donation for the Foxborough Cheer, from the Foxborough Cheerleading Booster Club, Dr. Berdows.
So you're aware that whenever we have additional coaches that are added on, booster clubs will then support those, and that is what you have here, which is the Foxborough Cheerleading Booster Club, to support the fall cheerleading JV coach. So it's a donation of one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Make a motion that we accept the donation from the Foxborough Cheerleading Booster Club in the amount of one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars with gratitude.
I'll second that. Discussion?
Can I ask a question? Do we set, do we set those payments? That, that's our recommendation from the school system?
It's within our contract. We have different tiers depending on the, the sports and the amount of time that goes into it, so yes.
So it's in the contract for it?
It's in the contract.
Even though it's a donation, it's in the contract?
Yes, it's for the amount that it's...
What happened years ago, Rich, that created a lot of problems for us, is that the unbeknownst to the administration is that the boosters' clubs were going to the head coaches and saying, well, we think you need some more support, we'd like to do this. And they would be doing it on their own, and they would then be paying them on their own. The problem we had is obviously we were not going through all of our, our standard, you know, checks. We don't go through the queries, we didn't go through everything else because we didn't even know that that was happening. So a couple of years ago, we, we changed the whole process and basically went to all the boosters' clubs and said, anytime you feel that you'd like to support, additional support within a thing, we feel that we are supporting what needs to be there through the educational budget, but if, if you want to put more in because you feel it's, it would be good for your, your students and whatever, that's fine. However, it comes through us, we're gonna go through all our vetting processes and we're going to, and, and we will actually be paying them directly ourselves.
And doing the appointment for that.
And doing the appointment, so.
Thank you.
It was kind of a cleanup and, and it's worked very well since, but it was...
I would, I would have suspected we did that, but I'm glad I asked because I wasn't a hundred percent sure.
Good question.
Because I think it was very easy for that to go, get loose pretty quick.
So the check comes from the Foxborough Public Schools?
No, the check comes from Foxborough, yes, the check comes from Foxborough, the boosters' club, to us.
And then we pay the coach.
And then we then issue the payment back out to the appropriate individual that did the job. And they can't even do it now until the superintendent approves them through the process of a normal hire.
Right.
So again, we have full, full, you know, knowledge of, of who's...
Knowledge and control and authority.
And that's also...
Query checks, oversight, everything, yeah.
Well, that's protection for the young people, too.
Well, it makes perfect sense, yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely.
We have a motion.
And we had a motion and a second.
And any further discussion? All in favor? Five zero zero, thank you very much. Other matters. Actually, would it be all right if I started tonight? I made a statement at our last school committee meeting, and it, I thought I had used the percep, word perception during part of what I said. If I did not, it should have been interjected. I had stated that it's preferable to have people who are not teachers serving on the teacher contract. It was not a mandate that they could not. We can serve as school committee members on teachers' contracts. In this case, it would go, I mean, Chris could perfectly do it because he belongs to another union. Richard actually never was a teacher.
I was.
In Foxborough.
Not in Foxborough.
Not in Foxborough. You were an administrator in Foxborough. So in, if, if I were to recommend how it would go, I would say, choose Chris first, then Richard. For me, there was a time, twelve and fifteen years ago, that there was a very contentious feeling, and it was perceived that if I, and, you know, perception is worse than reality, that I might be fit, because there was a standoff on a contract, and there were posters and signs and walks and were they gonna strike? So it was perceived that if I worked on it, I would favor the teachers. So I have always chosen to recuse myself because I was a longtime teacher in Foxborough. So is it clear now? It, it just, I mean, if ever there are two people on the school committee who would like to do, because Marilyn, you said you never worked and you would like to do it this year.
Right, I did ed assistance last year, so I wanted to do a...
Right, I did the aid assistance last year, so I wanted to do a teacher.
I certainly, yeah, I certainly would lean that way for perception.
Correct. Well, I'm happy to do it, I'm just, but I appreciate you clarifying it, especially since Chris and Richard are going to do our education assistance negotiations.
Right.
You know, everything is completely, you know, transparent there, so I appreciate you clarifying.
So I've always chosen to recuse myself, just because of that uncomfortable period. And, you know, we just, we just have to be careful of perception and all we, I mean, just like, you know, covering things correctly for the students, for, you know, extra coaching and things. Okay.
Okay.
Do you have other?
The varsity football is playing at Fenway tomorrow.
Oh, I know.
At 7:30.
I have a rehearsal, I can't go.
It's going to be 18 degrees, so bundle up. So I'm not really sure that I'm going in. We shall see. But I'm very excited for them, and it's a chance in a lifetime. It's lousy that, you know, some people are different traditions this year, but it's exciting for the kids and their parents and our school, so good luck, boys, and happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Tina?
It is once in a lifetime, and thanks to our wonderful Foxborough Cable Access station. If you can't get into Fenway tomorrow, you can watch it live on Foxborough Cable Access on the education channel, Channel 37, if you have Verizon, and I'm not sure what it is, if you have Comcast, because I have FiOS. But that brings me to my next point about Foxborough Cable Access. I wanted to let the committee know that Dr. Berdus, and I appreciate her doing this very much, submitted comments to the FCC by last Wednesday, which was the deadline for submitting comments in support of Foxborough Cable Access. So Dr. Berdus did on behalf of Foxborough Public Schools, and I know I submitted my personal comments, but hopefully, there won't be any changes to the current FCC regulations and our wonderful Foxborough Cable Access will stay as funded as they are now. I think that's great.
That's a concern for all cable access.
I think it is, absolutely. Yeah, so hopefully, that will, you know, play out. But I did appreciate, I know Dr. Berdus put a lot of thought into her comments and as I did, so we appreciate everything our cable access friends are doing, and they will. The whole crew is going to be there tomorrow night, so, and I will say that our former committee member, Bruce Gardner, will be videotaping, and his son Brady will be doing the color commentary, because our usual commentators are unavailable tomorrow night. So you can listen for FHS grad and current BU student and son of Bruce and Michelle tomorrow evening.
That's exciting.
That's fantastic.
I did have a couple other quick things. The Taylor School is doing Junie B. Jones, a musical, on Friday, November 30th, and Saturday, December 1st, I think 7:00 on Friday and 2:00 PM on Saturday, so.
Friday, November 30th and 2:00 on Saturday?
Saturday, December 1st at 2:00 PM. And also, the FHS swim team is going to be hosting a dinner on Friday, December 7th, at The V for our veterans. So any veteran, I saw a flyer up around school and on Facebook and on social, on Twitter. I was like, what else am I trying to say? At 6:00 PM. So I think Coach Butcher is, her husband is an Air Force veteran, and she is organizing this just to give back to the community with our swim team, so that's great. So that's all I have. I think it's a wonderful effort. That's an example of our kids doing community service. I know our Rotary Interact Club took toys to kids at Children's Hospital this past Saturday, and, you know, our kids, we heard our DECA Club is doing a community service project, so our kids are just doing great things all over the community.
Yeah, a lot of our students were giving out.
At all levels.
The turkeys the other day for the veterans. We delivered to the local veterans the other day through the J.C., I believe the J.C.'s ran it. So that was lovely. A lot, I saw a lot of students in the parking lot, which was nice.
Kids who do things.
We've got great kids.
Yep, we've got great kids here in Foxborough.
Chris?
Good luck to all the winter athletes trying out next week for different sports. Make sure you're registered on Family ID.
Rich?
Just, I want to just say thank you for all of you for six months. I've been here for six months, so thanks for your support. Thanks for the school district supporting me and learning my, learning the ropes here for my first six months.
We're just getting a hold of you.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Glad to have you, Richard.
Thank you, I'm really, I'm glad to be here, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Would you like to say one or two quick little things about your impressions at MASC?
Oh, yeah, I attended the MAS, MAS C conference, what, two weeks ago now, almost, yeah, a week and a half ago, right? Yeah, it was a great opportunity to really, to see and understand some of the policies and some of the workings of the policies from around the state, a little different angle, and also to collaborate with other school committee members and talk, hear what the differences are across the state. The challenges are pretty bold for the whole of us, and to learn how they approach some things. So I thought it was great, a great opportunity for me to see a little different side of things, so it was great.
Oh, yeah. I know, and there's going to be another new policy coming that we'll have to be working on maybe by the end of December, because Mike Gilbert wants to wrap it up before he retires. So there's always going to be work on policy.
Oh, yeah.
Then I wanted to say I had my normal, that is so stimulating, my normal frustration, couple of different units of time, there were three programs I wanted to be a part of, and they are scheduled at the same time. So anyway, that's a happy problem to have. And, you know, there are 341 towns and cities in Massachusetts. When you break it down into school districts, it drops down to 324 because of regional schools. Over 800 people, they went there all at once, but over 800 people attended that, and 323 of those school districts were represented. And they all promised, we're not going to tell you which one didn't. And I just want to say that if Juliette was in a musical in 2011.
She wasn't in it, I just remember there was something in those years.
Right, right, right. Well.
That was one thing she didn't do.
That was one thing, okay. But at least once in seven years, we had a fantastic musical, Bravo, to the musical that happened on our own Foxborough High School stage this past weekend.
Oh, it was fantastic.
That was away, I wanted to see it.
Oh, I mean, the energy of teenagers, it is like, it was great.
Well, and a large number of the performers were freshmen and sophomores, I believe. I know we had five senior men, five senior boys, who were in the musical, but the majority of them were younger ones, and so the future looks bright.
The future looks bright.
Musical future looks bright.
I'm not going to forget you.
I just wanted to say thank you to all of our parent volunteers. We've had all of our book fairs in our respective schools the last couple of weeks, and it's an exciting thing for students, they look forward to it, and most of it can't happen without the time that our parents give. And that's not the only way they give their time, but it's one recent one. So thanks to the parents, we appreciate you. Adam?
Okay, one of the pieces I wanted to add about Footloose, too, I agree, awesome. What I started to think about was the amount of time that they had to be able to pull off what they did. It really was a short amount of time to be able to accomplish what they did, and even with that crazy snow on Thursday night, we still had a huge showing for opening night, so that was fantastic. One of the other things that I wanted to mention, Suffolk Construction had reached out to us, this was about three, four weeks ago now, and they had, as part of their leadership team, it was kind of a spur of the moment, they were doing a partnership with Wish for Wheels where they were, their leadership team was building bicycles, and they built 100 of them. So they then wanted to donate them to students or to kids in need bikes. So they reached out and asked if we would be interested, and so Bill and I had had a number of calls back and forth with them, and they donated 100 bikes to us for first and second grade age students. We then ended up having parents put in for a raffle, and any student that actually put in for the raffle was awarded a bike.
And a helmet.
And a helmet that went with them as well.
That's great.
We actually then ended up having 35 of them that did not go out, so called the charter school, and then they did the same thing. So just want to thank Suffolk Construction for their generosity. It was Reed Bundy, who's the director of their corporate citizenship.
Oh, that's great.
For reaching out to us, and we've sent them a couple of pictures of the kids coming up to pick up their bikes. So that was just, it was a great surprise, a last-minute surprise, but a wonderful surprise for our students.
Very generous.
The other thing that I wanted to mention that we started last year, which is homework-free breaks. So we have four of those when we had talked about our social-emotional learning program review, and what are some things that we can do, some action steps? So last year, we took the Thanksgiving break, the holiday break in December, February, and April, and they were homework-free breaks, so students could spend time with their families. If they have example long-term projects, they're assigned at a time to where it doesn't have to be completed over the break, it's where they have plenty of other time to do that. So just a reminder that we value our families and want our families to be able to spend time together over the Thanksgiving break and to have a very happy Thanksgiving.
Did you say we started that last year?
Last year.
I'm sorry, thank you very much.
Did we get feedback from it?
Yes, we did.
A lot of really positive feedback, yes.
Okay. Yes, and so principals are, you know, in buildings, again, reminding everyone that it went really well last year, and one of the other things that we had done was midterms starting a little bit later. So there's some little things that we're trying to make where it makes a difference, and sometimes those little things make a big difference.
Oh, absolutely.
They brought the dogs in for the finals.
Yes.[1734.63]